Need to turn on our camera, that would be great. Welcome, everyone, I'm calling the October 20th City Council Meeting to Order, and I am going to start with an apology. I am so sorry that the Mariners are playing in one of the most important series they've ever had, but we still must start our meeting at 7 o'clock. So, if there is a big announcement, I'll leave it to City Administrator Bob Kowits to give you the information that you need. So as a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings, both staff members and members of the public participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we do have an item of special business this evening, and it's a sad one. So before we begin working through our agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of a former City Council member and community volunteer, Eileen Barber. Eileen was a longtime resident, a business owner, an active member of the Chamber of Commerce, and one of the original organizers of the Salmon Days Festival. Eileen was also a City Council member, she served on the City Council in Position Number Three from 2006 to 2017. She served as Chair of the Services and Safeties Committee and the City's Representative to RIA-8, among other regional groups. There will be a memorial service held for Eileen on November 22nd at Flintoff's, and we will have more details. And I just wanted to say, when I came onto council, Eileen was a great friend and a great mentor to me, and I got to work with her not only on committee-level work, but also at Eastside Fire and Rescue, and also at the Friends of Isqwa Salmon Hattery Board. So I will miss her dearly, and I'd like to ask if any other council members would like to make a remark before I do a moment of silence. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the honor of serving with Councilmember Barber for eight years on council, the first eight years that I had. And she always showed up with impeccably representing a certain kind of point of view, which, as a small business owner, she loved being that voice. And there were more than a few times where if she was on the lower side of a six-to-one or a five-to-two vote, she was always graceful about it. I can't think of one time where she let it bother her. And I like to, and I always like to think of her, if I find myself, you know, on a one or two in a vote, because she just thought it was an honor to serve, and she was presenting a point of view, and how it went was how it went. So I miss that, and that point of view is essential to a high-functioning council. So I learned a lot from her, and our community is poor for her being gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Deputy Council President?
I think Tola said it very, very well. I will just say that I just highly, highly respected her. She was a wonderful, a kind person. She did her homework. You knew that she had read everything, that she knew the topic. Many times, we talked over things that happened at council when I was on the school board, and she knew her homework, and she just was so thorough and so complete, but also she listened so well. So, yes, we are going to miss her. She was a guiding force for Salmon Days and also for so many community activities. So she was really a force to reckon with. Yeah, we're gonna miss her.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to talk a little bit about Eileen. She, when I first came to town in 1999 and started activities with the Chamber of Commerce, Eileen Barber was already an institute, an institution there, and a solid contributor. I always remember the way that she would come to every meeting. Our lunch meetings were at the Holiday Inn at the time, and contributed all the time to what was going on as a small business owner. I also had the pleasure of serving with her on the precursor to DIA. It was the Isqwa Downtown Association. And those board meetings were always a little contentious with one area of town with certain businesses kind of having a different interest with the other area of town. But Eileen was always a broker, always a peacemaker that helped us. She was instrumental in gaining the Ginkgo Tree recognition done during that time as well, and that memorial out there, I think, is memorial to her at times when I passed by. Finally, Eileen is a person that would give her shirt off her back for you if you needed it. As you know, I announced the parade for Salmon Days, and I was up there at the stand, and I realized that I didn't have a Salmon Day shirt. And Eileen went to the golf cart that was there, and she took the extra shirt that she had, and she gave it to me so that I could have one as I was announcing the parade. And I'll just never forget the love and care that she showed for this community, and I'm gonna miss her quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Anyone else? Well, I just want to say, if you don't know what business she owned, she was known in my family as the Ben Franklin's Lady. So, Eileen has just totally left her mark on our community, and I'm so grateful that you were able to add some more stories to that. So if you'll all join me in a minute of silence, thank you very much. Thank you very much, everyone. I also have one more announcement before we move into tonight's agenda. AB 9026, the Wash Dot Transfer of Development Rights Development Agreement Extension for Bellevue College was initially scheduled for the September 8th Committee of the Whole and has subsequently been delayed. It is now scheduled to come back to the City Council at the November 10th Council Meeting. The next item of business is ID 1864, World Town Planning Day Proclamation, and I'd like to invite Kristin Leeson to come over to this lectern. So I am a total land use planning geek, and I think this celebration is totally worth it. I think the way you build great cities is by being hyper-focused on how the build-out happens. And Kristin Leeson has been with the city long before I joined the council or the mayorship, and so it's really fun for me tonight to do this award with her. Whereas the International Organization of World Town Planning Day was founded in 1949 to advance public and professional interest in planning, both locally and abroad, and to create a special day to recognize and promote the role of planning in creating livable communities. And whereas celebration of WTPD is promoted each year by the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, and whereas urban planners play a critical role in creating livable, sustainable communities, and we celebrate the valuable contributions sound planning makes to the quality of life in our local communities and all levels of government. And whereas planning provides an opportunity for all community members to be meaningfully involved in making better choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the celebration of WTPD gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of Planning Policy Commission and community members who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Isqwa, Washington. And whereas the city of Washington wishes to show appreciation for the many valuable contributions made by dedicated planning professionals in the city of Isqwa, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals, now therefore I, Mary Lee Polly, Mayor of the City of Isqwa, do recognize November 8th, 2025 to be World Town Planning Day in the city of Isqwa, and I invite the community to join me in thanking Isqwa's Community Planning and Development Department for their service and outstanding contributions. Kristin?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I appreciate it. And yes, you were an honorary planning geek with us. We're happy to have you. I just want to say that in all of my time here, I have worked with very, very good planners who work hard with the community to not only establish visions and policies and goals, but then to ensure that those get implemented and put onto the ground so that that community who lives here has what they want and what they need to see now and later.
Next item on the agenda is ID 1917, the American Public Works Association Heroes Report for the Washington Chapter. The American Public Works Association Chapter Heroes awards and recognizes individuals or groups for outstanding service to their communities by frontline first responder public works employees. This is not among the chapter's annual awards, but is instead reserved for the most deserving demonstrations of service. The APWA recently presented the city's public works team with the awards for its exemplary response to the November 2024 bomb cyclone. And I'd like to invite Public Works Director Emily Moon, Senior Maintenance Worker John White, and Maintenance Senior Lead Kenny Steele to come up and be recognized. So I'm gonna hand this over to Director Moon to talk about our staff and the amazing job that they did during the bomb cyclone while they're holding a war.
Thank you very much, Mayor Polly and City Council. It is hefty.
It's hefty.
More than you would think. Yeah, we're really proud of this, more so, we're really proud of the effort that went into the actions behind this award. We removed over 440 tons of debris. That's just one of the statistics I could give you during and after the bomb cyclone. And it took hours of concentrated effort by this team to respond to that event, and I could not be more proud of the team. In particular, John and Kenny led some of our teams that were working onsite in neighborhoods. They were the first responders. People literally came out of their houses and asked for status updates and told us what they were experiencing, and this team responded, made sure that our community members have what they needed to get through this event. So I want to say thank you on behalf of the community and also on behalf of your colleagues that can be here tonight. Thank you for being here and accepting this award from APWA.
Would you join me in standing up and giving these standing ovation? We are so blessed to have staff like this. Thank you, Director Moon. Thank you, Emily. We are now going to move into the Audience Comments portion of our meeting, and this is the time where members of the public may address the council in person or virtually. And those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. There is also a public hearing tonight on AB 9052, the 2026 Property Tax Levy, and AB 9053, the 2025/2026 Mid-Biennium Budget Adjustment. Comment on these items should be made during the public hearing occurring later in the meeting. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. So if you're making comments this evening, you're invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Isqwa's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals, and while it's not a question-and-answer session, we will continue. We will contact you to follow up if needed. So when you are recognized, if you are virtual, please unmute your microphone. If you're in the room, please stand, come up to that lectern in the center and press the button on that pad to make your microphone active. Please state your name and address, relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and please limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and you do not respond after your name is called, or your phone number, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed. So you're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address us. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, the first person is Paul Quinn, but I don't believe Paul is with us in the room, nor do I see him online unless he is the phone-in caller. So Paul, if that is you, please raise your virtual hand by pressing star three. The next person signed up to speak is Anand, who's here in the room.
Welcome, Mr. Mott. It's right on the pad. Thank you. Not yet.
Oh, thank you. First of all, thank you for making the time to hear my and my wife's application here. Really appreciate that. I'll keep this brief within five minutes, for sure. We had sent you an email with some details. You know, what I'm going to do is to give you a summary of what we had sent. This is about the water leak adjustment policy that the City Council, I'm assuming, is considering for a modification. We are a resident of Isqwa. We live in Grand Ridge, and we had an unfortunate situation. July 15th, we got a notice, which was a written notice, hanging in our door saying there was an unusual amount of water that was going into our property. We were on vacation, so we came on 18th, I think it's a Friday. We kind of first looked inside the home, because the water inside the home has been a big issue for us in the past, so thankfully there was none. Then we called somebody in on the 19th, and we were able to detect that it was part of infrastructure that we had outside the home to feed basically the grass lawn, and also we had like a water fountain. It was the infrastructure that was feeding into the fountain as well. There was a, it was under the ground. We detected it, it took a while to diagnose it. We detected it, and then we fixed it the same day. But unfortunately, by the time this came to our attention, about almost, I think, more than 30 days had passed, and the city recorded a consumption of about close to 915,000 gallons of water. And, you know, we just could not reckon where the water went, because there was no visible evidence of that water anywhere outside as we were driving the car by or walking around that place. So it was very difficult for us to detect it. And the city's intimation to us was only through the written tag that was posted at the door. We did not get any email or, you know, phone call, which could have helped us possibly to jump in a little earlier if that was possible. So that is the situation, and what I am here to basically seek your help is to consider the situation, and I have the following remarks to make. So the leak occurred in the underground line feeding the outdoor fountain, a part of our irrigation infrastructure. The leak itself did not happen in any of the pipe that was a decorative or a discretionary feature. It was part of an irrigation apparatus that is required to feed the water in the lawn. The city's digital metering system logged a massive spike in water usage weeks before the door tag was issued, yet known phone call, text, or email notification was made to alert us. This lack of timely outreach eliminated any opportunity to intervene earlier or reduce the loss, because we, there was no way humanly one could notice that so much amount of water was going inside the drain. There was no sound or no soil erosion of any of that kind. The meter recorded approximately 915,000 gallons, equal to nearly 19 full-sized swimming pools. Despite this figure, there was no visible evidence of flooding, saturation, or erosion. Request for equitable adjustment, given the delayed notification, absence of visible leakage, and immediate repair, we respectfully request the City Council authorize an equitable adjustment specifically by reclassifying Block Five charges, which is about 95% of our bill. So we had an abnormal bill of about $38,000 because of this water consumption, and almost 90% of that has been charged at Block Five charges. So what we are seeking here is an equitable adjustment to charges for that amount of water, but at the base rate or at a lower rate. So that's our ask. We also looked at the situation with neighboring cities, Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, and all of them, as you can see in my note, have a much more, you know, understanding point of view in terms of how to look at these leaks. So I'll stop there. I think I have just 25 seconds left. I don't want to overshoot that. But we have sent you an email with all the data and the artifacts, and I want to thank Mayor and her office too for patiently listening to us and giving us this opportunity, and I hope you will consider our situation and give it a fair hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mott. Is there anyone else signed up for public comments tonight?
Yes, Corby Kessler.
Corby, come on up.
I am going to touch on budget adjustments, so if you want, I can wait until the public hearing.
Do you want to talk about a multitude of things or mostly budget adjustments?
A multitude of things.
Oh, well, take this time to talk about any of the general items you want to talk about, and then come back up when we have the public hearing.
Okay. I'm Corby Kessler. I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown Isqwa Association. I sent you a letter today listing our accomplishments, so I'm not going to get into details about that, but I hope you read it and understand the vast work that our volunteers are doing that's doing incredible things for our downtown businesses and for our downtown charm. We do have 100 vendors who have successfully sold items because of the markets that we've been able to give them opportunities to participate in. So it's been really rewarding to see artists and vendors and especially food markets be able to make a living because of the things that we are doing. And a lot of what we are doing is because of the Main Street Tax Credit Incentive Program, of which the city is a funder. So we thank you and appreciate you for participating in that program. Just a little background on that again, it's a program where BNO taxes, or in the city's case, the utility taxes, are pushed aside essentially. So if you invest 25 cents in DIA, 75 cents, you'll get a tax credit through this program. So the investment is phenomenal. It's really a powerhouse tool to get, to help us diversify, which we're intending to do. But I do want to come back and talk a little bit more about what the city can possibly do for us and what we might want to do with that kind of money. But I did want to just let you know that we've had a great time bringing foot traffic into our businesses, and we're creating a sense of belonging at the Isqwa Goes Apples on Saturday. It was just so heartfelt to see people just having a good time, and no matter who they are, everybody felt welcomed, and it was really a great sense of belonging, and that's what we intend to do through all of the different programming that we do. And I'll come back later to talk about budget.
Thank you, Corby.
Thank you.
City Clerk, has anyone else signed up this evening?
No.
Can you check if there are any online folks?
We do have a few members of the public with us virtually, but they're not indicating a desire to speak at this time.
Thank you. So I appreciate those that did speak this evening. Hand just went up. Okay, we'll take it.
Okay. Ken, I see that you just raised your hand, so I'm gonna make you a panelist now. You should be able to unmute.
Okay, I think I successfully pushed the right buttons. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Kent Easton, and I reside at Pad 2473, the Stone Creek Drive in Isqwa. I'd like to comment on a few topics tonight. I've read the document that the Isqwa Highlands Community Association Executive Director sent to the City Council members regarding the Bellevue College Development Agreement. I'm troubled by the lack of community involvement in the process to handle the works of the development agreement. Master-planning communities such as the Highlands and Talas have had a longstanding role in the community regarding architecture review, plans, development agreements. Previously, ending a development agreement was a process that solicited community input and HOA input, and the city responding with the proposed plan and adjusting it as warranted from that feedback. Rushing forward to end this agreement without involving the community members is wrong and disrespectful to the residents, and that will be directly impacted. The second topic that I'd like to comment on is low sales tax increase targeted at improving community safety. Increasing spending in this area is a welcome idea, however, I'm doubtful the city has done a thorough job of reviewing all the current spending, taking the difficult steps, canceling programs that provide minimal value, cost the taxpayers more than they provide benefit. Metroflex is one of these programs. Its advocates say that it provides health for low-income people, but the statistics simply don't bear that out. 75% of the trips are non-EPA. They also say it helps the environment, but it hourly averages only two, three-mile distance trips. There's a lot of dead time there. So when it's cold outside, the van sits idling, and I see that in my community. And when it's warm outside, it sits idling and running the air conditioner. 45% of the rides are single-user. One of the most popular ride start points is the ice go, though we've got kids that are using it. Costs taxpayers over $40 a ride. It's put Metroflex as among the worst-performing routes in terms of efficiency in the Metroflex system. So Metroflex, it's an interesting idea, but in a lot of cases, it's simply a taxpayer-subsidized Uber for affluent residents and kids. County is also looking at increasing taxes, as is the state. So low-income residents will be impacted by higher taxes to pay for programs that are just not working. Isqwa families have to manage their household finances and make tough spending decisions, and so should the city. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you, Ken. City Clerk, is there anyone else online before I go to the room?
No.
Thank you. So I'm looking around the room. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment this evening? Not seeing an indication of that. Well, I thank those that did choose to speak tonight. We heard about the City Council's water leakage policy that is being discussed right now. We heard about our Downtown Isqwa Association's list of accomplishments, which was sent to council, and we heard about the Bellevue College Development Agreement and concerns about community engagement, also concerns about the sales tax increase and not, sorry, yes, concerns about the sales tax increase, but also in conjunction with an ongoing review of existing expenditures. So thanks to everybody who testified tonight. I think that's very helpful for the council. And as a reminder, you can always submit to council at any point in time your comments through thecitycouncil@isqwa.gov email address. We are going to move into the consent calendar, and I do not have any remarks on the consent calendar this evening, but I'd like to open it up to committee calendar this evening, but I'd like to open it up to committee chairs or chair designees who would like to report on the consent calendar items. Councilmember Marks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So last month, the Services Safety and Parks Committee did take a second look at the water adjustment policy that was referenced earlier, water leak billing adjustments, IMC proposed language. We were presented with comparable cities to see how other cities were handling it. Ours, of course, would be leak adjustment criteria, leak in the service line repaired within 30 days of discovery or notification by the city. The adjustment calculation would be adjusting the factor back to the third tier. So basically, we'd still be billing folks for the water, but at a, not a profligate rate, but a careful rate. No adjustment for irrigation systems, pools, or boat docks, as was noted by the public earlier. And then this was a one-time adjustment per owner, per property, so it would be a one-time deal. So based on all of that, the committee did recommend 3 to 0 to move this forward to council as part of the packet. This concludes my part.
Thank you, Chair Marks. Are there any other council members or council chairs that would like to provide comments? Not seeing any. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Not seeing any indication. Is there someone who would like to make a motion? Council President?
I approve. I move we approve the consent calendar as distributed.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously, 7 to 0. We're now going to move into a public hearing, AB 9052, the 2026 Property Tax Levy. This evening, we will be conducting the public hearing, and I'd like to invite Budget Manager Suzie Moncel to present this item. And after that, I'll open the public hearing. Suzie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just going to pull up the presentation here. Thank you. I'm here tonight to present on two public hearings. The first is starting with the 2026 Proposed Property Tax Levy. RCW 84.55 requires jurisdictions levying property tax to hold a public hearing on revenue sources prior to adopting the property tax levies. So we will be conducting the public hearing tonight, and we will be asking for a vote on the property tax levy at the November 17 meeting. State law allows jurisdictions to increase the amount of property tax received annually by just 1% plus the value of new construction. So as that table shows, our base levy of 2026 is about 10.8 million. We are allowed to increase it by 1% or about 108,000, the value of new construction. There are some prior year refunds. So our total 2026 levy with that 1% increase is about $11 million. And compared to our 2025 levy, that's approximately 164,000 larger. The property values for '26 are expected to decrease minimally. So the median household value was 1.3 million in our last forecast, and it is currently 1.1 million. So the estimated regular levy due to the city would decrease for the average household from $804 to $652, or a saving of about $152. All right, so this just represents the median house, at various property values, what would the household have to pay for property tax in both regular levy and excess levy? So as you can see there, that 1.1 million average, they'd be paying $652 in the regular levy and 92 in the excess or voted levy for a total of 744. If the city does not take a 1% increase, that's represented by the table down below and represents a $10 difference. So where does the property taxes go? Approximately only 0.09 on the dollar of total property tax comes to the city of Issaquah. This chart is from 2023, but I checked it this morning. It is still true. So just want to keep that in mind as we look at the overall property tax levy that goes to each household. And with that, I have to open the public hearing.
Thank you. So I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:37. And if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. And if you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before we close this portion of the meeting. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak?
No one has signed up to speak, and I'm just looking at our virtual attendees here. Not seeing anyone indicate a desire to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the room this evening who would like to speak during this public hearing? I'm not seeing an indication of that. So if there is, is there any objection to closing the public hearing, looking at council? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, and this item will return to the city council on November 17 for potential action. The next one, Suzie's still up here, is AB 9053, 2025-2026 Mid-Biennium Budget Adjustment. Again, we're holding a public hearing this evening, and Suzie is back up to present.
Thank you. So I'm going to keep this very brief tonight because much of this information, or really all of this information, was presented to the council last week. But just leading into the public hearing, we'd like to reiterate some of that information. We are required to hold a public hearing prior to adopting the budget. There are still two more meetings ahead of when we are bringing this to a vote, and we'll have more on that later in the presentation. We are operationally balanced, meaning our ongoing expenses match our ongoing revenues. So with increased revenue coming in '26, particularly sales tax and BNO tax, with limited ongoing additions, the general fund is balanced. The proposed budget adjustments, along with the planned use of fund balance in 2025 as budgeted, will decrease fund balance over the '25-'26 biennium. General fund forecast, looking at the unrestricted fund balance, the adopted budget assumed an ending fund balance as a percent of expenditures of approximately 15% in both '25 and '26. We're currently forecasting an ending fund balance of 7% at the end of 2026. The difference between the '26 budget and the '26 forecast, as we show now, is three buckets primarily, 1.4 million budgeted use of fund balance in the '25 budget, so that was budgeted ongoing needs. 2.2 million for an ARPA correction reducing the actual unrestricted fund balance, and then 1.6 million in proposed adjustments for '25 and '26, not funded by any other resources. This table just is a numerical representation of what I was just sharing, so I'm going to keep moving. I'm going to briefly run through the adjustments that are proposed as part of this biennium adjustment. So this includes some previously approved items, so already approved by the council, including a bucket truck, communication specialist, or dispatcher, and the Issaquah Housing Investment Plan Contribution to the Life Enrichment Options, Emily, program, apologies. The utility fund adjustments are also for a couple of capital projects, to Newport Sewer Relocation Program and Highwood Reservoirs and retrofit. And again, those were previously approved by council. And then there are a few grant-adjusted items, so for video analytics, for solar PV system and storage at the senior center, and for Gilman well. And the new spending proposed, we're looking at approximately 188,000 for employee leave payouts, for known employee leave payouts, an increase in public defense contracts, an increase to street operating needs, particularly with LED lighting, copper theft, and the result of this bomb cyclone, about 12,000 to close out ARPA, and 30,000 for electronic monitoring devices for defendants. There is one capital project adjustment as well, and that's the pavement preservation project, East Lakes Mammoth Preservation Project. General fund adjustments, there are just a few. A portion of those leave payouts hits the general fund at about 75,000. There are two additional parks positions. Then there are, there's a larger increase in 2026 to the public defense contracts, and there are affordable housing study, a few other items as well that the council would have seen last week. And then a few proposed adjustments outside of the general fund, a grant in the art fund, station improvements in the sewer fund, and closing out a bond series from 2020 around strategic small capital projects in transportation. Looking forward, our plans for 2026 are to move large restricted revenues out of the general fund, so mainly this is going to be the affordable housing sales tax. And then we're reconciling capital project, the capital project fund to identify undesignated funding, so that's a project we're working on currently. And plans for the next biennial budget, which will be developed next year, continued operational balancing, so balancing ongoing revenue and expenditures, consideration of how one-time adds can impact fund balance, and the update on the long-range financial plan. As I mentioned, staff will be back next week to discuss several topics related to this adjustment, including the public safety sales tax, the proposed amendments that I just ran through, Metro Flex, emergency management, and the Fourth of July and World Cup. And that says what I just said again, except we have one more meeting on November 17 where we are bringing it to a vote. And that is my presentation.
Thank you again, Suzie. So I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:44. And again, if you're joining us virtually and you'd like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. And if you're in the room and did not sign up, I'll ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak?
No, aside from our earlier speaker.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak to this item? Come on up, Corby.
Executive Director of the Downtown Issaquah Association. Last year was a tough budget year. We all went through it. It was very painful, and the nonprofits did take a hit, DIA, Morsos, and some of the other nonprofits. And I totally get trying to pay your bills and making budget. I understand that. But when you look at the things that really create the ROI in downtown Issaquah and the Main Street Tax Credit Incentive Program, where the impact to the general fund is a lot less than if you didn't have the tax credits, I think, looking at that holistically, I'd love to look at the budget for DIA again. We went from 120,000 a year to little more than 90,000, and for next year, it was proposed that we go down to in the 60s. So that would cut us in half. And I just want to take a look at it again, take a look at the, all the different things that we've been doing to downtown, talk to the businesses, find out from them what it is they need and how useful having an association like DIA is to be their advocate and their connector. So that's all I'm asking, is to take a look at the budgets again for this year and for next year, understanding that everybody's strapped and understanding it's a tough call, but just take a look at it again, is all I ask.
Thank you, Corby.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak this evening? Not seeing any indication. I will close the, let's see. Are we reading it? I'm just kind of checking through the notes. Okay, so city council, since you will be deliberating the mid-biennium budget adjustment at the October 27 city council special, city council meeting, it is recommended you keep the public hearing open so the public can comment on any changes that come out of that meeting. Is there any objection to continuing the public hearing to November 17 city council meeting? I'm not seeing any objection. Hearing none, the public hearing is continued, and I thank Corby for talking about reconsideration of the allocation for DIA. Thanks, Corby. We're going to move into regular business, AB 8991, the Utility Rate Study and Utility Rates and Charges. The request before council this evening is to authorize and adopt ordinances, and we're going to have Public Works Director Emily Moon and Utility Engineering Manager Matt Ellis and Consultant Sergey Tarasov to present this item. Sergey, I hope I said your name right. Director Moon.
Good evening, everyone. Great. Happy to be here tonight to hopefully present to you a final version of the Utility Rate Study. And I have just a couple introductory slides, and then Sergey is going to walk through our final results from that study and all the good work that council committees put into this effort. Sorry, slide issue. So tonight, our recommendation is that city council approve the ordinances that would adopt the new rates beginning in 2026, and that you authorize the mayor to accept the study, which is in draft form in your packet as we're making some final minor edits and no substantive changes. Wanted to just quickly review kind of the framework for the Utility Rate Study. We had a goal to develop the rates for all of our utility funds, water, sewer, storm water, that would fund all of our operating and capital needs for a five-year period, but taking a longer look into the future about what needs are around the corner as well. Our objectives for the Utility Rate Study was to ensure that the future rates were uniform, were predictable, that they were defensible, and that they covered the full cost of providing utility services both now and in future years, and that we had sufficient operating reserves to protect the funds and make sure that if something unforeseen were to happen, we had the ability to withstand that. We also wanted to make sure that we could afford all the capital infrastructure investments. These funds are heavily weighted by the amount of capital infrastructure that they need to pay for over the next five years and well into the future as we maintain these critical infrastructures. We had a lot of meetings to talk about the Utility Rate Study. We did start with Committee of the Whole back in March, and we talked about the big picture of revenue requirements. Sergey's going to talk a little bit about what that term means, but really, we took a step back and we said, what is it we think we need to fund? Then this body of work went to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. That committee did a deep dive over a series of three substantive, substantial meetings, and then reviewed the final product in September and made those final recommendations to the full council, which are being heard tonight. And with that, I'll invite Sergey Tarasov.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council, and thank you for taking the time to meet with me this evening to continue our discussion regarding the multi-utility rate study. Now, before we dive in, I just wanted to provide you with a brief outline. We're going to go over just a high-level discussion of what is a rate study, what goes into a rate study, just the process on the technical side. We're going to do a very brief background. I think Emily did a great job providing a summary of the education and discussions that we've had throughout this rate study. And then we'll get into the key policy guidance that we received from the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee as we went along, as well as the final rates and proposed recommendations. Feel free to ask questions as we go along. Now, in terms of the study itself, the technical aspect of the study can be really summarized into three key analytical steps, which have to be performed sequentially. Step number one is referred to as revenue requirement. This is where we zoom out a little bit, we take a look at the big picture, making sure that we can that we can sustain our obligations individually by utility on a multi-year basis. So here, we want to make sure that whatever expenditures that we have, our water utility can cover itself, our sewer utility can cover itself, there's no cross-utility subsidizations that's occurring. Then we dive a little bit deeper in the second step, which we refer to as a cost of service. Really, you can refer to it as an interclass cost allocation. And here, what we're really trying to do is identify if there are differences to provide service to different types of customers. So residential customers versus commercial versus irrigation and so on. If you think of step one as identifying the size of the pie of costs that we have to cover, step two really looks at slicing the pie into pieces and identifying how big each piece really has to be. Lastly, once we've identified the total targets of revenues by class, by system, we developed actual fixed and variable charges that are assessed to our customers through rate design. Now, a quick background, again, the last study completed for the city was in 2020. A multi-year plan was developed and adopted by the council at that time. You can see the plan on the slides, hopefully, that was implemented. As that plan came to an end, the city engaged FCS to perform an update to the, to the study to see what the next five years or so would look like from a self-sufficiency perspective, and can our utilities and rates sustain our expenses, and if not, what do we need to do about it? As Emily mentioned, we've held one meeting, one meeting back in March with the council committee as a whole, and then after that, we had approximately four meetings with the Mobility and Infrastructure Committees or Committee discussing all the topics at hand. The key policy that came out of it, and I'll go through each elements of the study, are as following. On the revenue requirement side, when we met with the Committee of the Whole, really the big guidance that we received is that we want to limit our impacts to our customers to at or below 6% is number one. And number two is that we do want to plan for the future. We don't want to be short-sighted. We don't want to just hone in on the next three to five-year period. We want to make sure we can cover our obligations, our system is in good repair and functioning out into the future. So we did perform a 20-year rate study. We're only focusing on the five-year plan, but we did look out into the future to make sure you don't fall off a cliff, so to speak, after that five years is over. There was some discussion regarding the financing methodology. The main guidance was try to minimize the borrowing aspect of funding of capital, don't defer it altogether, but try to minimize it as possible, and that's what we were able to accomplish through this study as well. On the second step, the cost of service, the main guidance we received is that we do want to be cost-based. At the same time, we want to limit any one-class impact and mitigate significant increases as much as possible. So the cost of service identified, there are differences. We want to incorporate those adjustments to get them to every class to cost of service. We want that adjustment to be gradual. So phase-in was preferred as an approach to address any differences identified. On the rate design front, we addressed two items. Number one is that we consolidated two classes into one. So currently, you have a single-family class, duplex, and a multitude of other classes. When we reviewed the design criteria and usage patterns for the duplex class of service, it was very similar in nature to the single-family class of service. So to simplify the structure, we proposed consolidating duplex into single-family for both water and sewer customer classifications of service. The second edit we proposed to the committee was to recalibrate the minimum usage criteria for sewer customers. Currently, the non-residential customers are assessed a volume rate to recover the pass-through cost from King County. And the way King County bills us is based on residential customer equivalents, which they define as 700 cubic feet of water per month or 1,500 cubic feet bimonthly, since the city bills on a bimonthly basis. Currently, the minimum charge for the city assumes 12.2 CCF for bimonthly period. So we propose just simply recalibrating and tying it to the King County definition of 15 CCF. Lastly, on the general facility charges, these are slightly different than ongoing fees. These are one-time fees imposed on new development or certain capacity upsizing redevelopment as a condition of service. We've updated these charges based on appropriate information and methodology supporting these charges and proposed the updated charges to the committee. The committee agreed to move the sewer and stormwater charges to the cost-based levels starting in 2026. For the water utility, because the increases were a bit higher, they, the committee proposed doing a gradual multi-year phase-in. So a 10-year phase-in was proposed instead. And then lastly, for the GFCs or general facility charges, the current methodology for, an approach for the city is to adjust these charges with inflation, because these charges are calculated in today's dollars and they're strictly tied to capital. So as assets and values of infrastructure go up, you're allowed to increase them with an accredited construction cost inflation index, and the committee proposed to continue that practice into the future. So that's the key policy. Now, the next couple of slides, I apologize, will have numbers, a lot of numbers in them, but this is simply a summary of your proposed rate structures. Here, you're seeing the summary of the water utilities rates, focusing on a single-family and duplex. The upper table shows you the fixed charges. You'll notice that the single-family and duplex rates are slightly different, but as soon as we get into 2026, they're going to be identical by meter size. Similarly, the second table provides you a summary of the volume rates. There's a four-block structure for duplex customers and a five-block structure for the single-family customers. Again, starting in 26, they're going to be aligned into the same five-block structure. And the combined class will collect the cost-of-service identified revenues. There's not going to be loss of revenue or increase of revenue. It's going to strictly tie to the cost-of-service analysis for, for the combined class of service. Moving on to the water utilities, non-residential customers, you'll see that the non-residential classification is made up of several subcategory, subcategories, including apartments, commercial customers, public authority, and large users. Similarly, the upper table shows you fixed charges, and you'll notice every class, all the classes have the same fixed charge, and we'll continue to have that simplified approach in the proposed rate structure. So the adjustment for the fixed charges will be the same no matter what subcategory you're in. The usage charges are adjusted based on the cost-of-service specific class targets. So whatever the class-specific target it was, we're simply collecting that revenue through those volume rates. And again, we're making the cost-of-service phase-in as gradual and as close to the average increase as much as possible. Lastly, for the water utility, we have the irrigation classes. We have the parks and right-of-way irrigation, kind of the public irrigation class of service, as well as the private irrigation class of service. Here, similarly, the fixed charges in the upper table are consistent between the two classes. The main difference comes between the charges by tier or block of service. Currently, the parks and right-of-way irrigation is lower than the private irrigation rates. Based on the findings of cost of service, we are proposing to align them, but to mitigate the significant impacts that would, that will cause in year one, we are taking a more gradual approach and working to align them over time. So we get about halfway or so there by 2030. During the next cycle, that should be revisited, and if everything stays on course, would get, get everybody within cost of service by the end of the next rate cycle. But again, that should be revisited based on most accurate usage patterns at that time. Moving on to the sewer utility, here, the charges are broken down between the local charges, the charges that you have control over, the collection system, the maintenance and so on of the local infrastructure. And those charges are made up of a fixed charge, which is the same for all customers, no matter what class they're in, and a volume rate of 249, again, the same for every class of service. Performing the cost-of-service analysis, there are minor cost differences between classes, so we are applying the differential to get everybody within cost of service to the volume charges. So again, keeping the fixed charges the same, and the volumetric charges will start to deviate slightly starting in 2026. You'll notice that the single-family class will have the lowest increase compared to the other classes and so on, but the differences are very minor by class of service. The second slide will show you the summary of both the local charges plus the King County pass-through charges. Here, the upper table shows you the fixed charges. You'll notice that the single-family class has a pretty high fixed charge. This is because under the current structure, the fixed charges from King County are recovered through a fixed charge on a bimonthly basis. For duplex and everybody else currently, those King County charges are recovered through a volumetric charge. So when you look at the middle table, you'll see the volume rates are much higher for duplex through non-residential customers. Our proposal, as we talked about in the introduction, is to condense the single-family and duplex together. So you'll notice, starting in 26, the duplex fixed charges will mimic single-family, and their volumetric charges will mimic single-family as well. All other classes will keep the current methodology where the fixed charges from King County are passed through the volumetric rate, and the only difference is really coming from that local portion of the charge. Lastly, the minimum charges are adjusted, as we talked about in introduction as well, increasing from 12.2 CCF bimonthly to about 15 CCF strictly to tie to King County Treatments' definition of residential customer equivalents, or RCEs. And finally, for the stormwater utility, here, the charges are assessed on an equivalent service unit basis, which is either one single-family home or parcel or 2,000 square feet of non-residential impervious surface area. So all homes, all non-residential ESUs are assessed the same fee. The undeveloped parcels are assessed slightly reduced fee as well. So again, there's no class differentiation, it's just a charge for equivalent service unit, and that'll just go up across the board by the average increase. So to wrap everything up for the ongoing fee segment of the presentation, here, we brought back the residential survey. Here, again, I always caution that this is a little bit of an apples and oranges comparison, because every utility is different, every policy decision maker's choices are different, our costs for supply and treatment are different depending on the neighboring utility, but in general, this question does get asked. And lastly, we're comparing our rates today to the proposed rates for next year versus everybody else's rates today as well. So again, a little bit of an apples and oranges comparison. But in general, you're in the lower end of the comparison, you would be moving up one tick if nobody else does anything with the rates, and we know for a fact, a lot of these utilities would be going up just simply by the fact that a lot of them also receive King County treatment, and those rates are going up. So a lot of these utilities will be implementing rate adjustments at the same time. And then to finish things off, we'll switch gears a little bit to the one-time fees imposed to new development or upsizing redevelopment, the general facility charges, or short for GFCs. Here, we calculated the cost-based rates for all utilities. Again, on the sewer and stormwater side, the proposed charges that were presented to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee would be going up to the cost-based levels starting in 2026, which would be approximately a $2,000 increase per residential customer equivalent for the sewer charge, about $2,800 with some rounding there, increase for the sewer, for the stormwater utility, which would be going up $2,800 for the cost-based charge there as well for ESU. Now, on the water side, the charges are actually separated into class of service because there are different facility sizing requirements depending on what class you're in. The highest fire floor requirements are actually associated with non-residential multifamily type of accounts. So the charges you'll notice in the middle table are currently the highest out of the three-connection type of charges. Single-family is the second lowest, their fire floor requirements are the lowest in terms of the classes that do have fire protection service benefits. And then lastly, irrigation at the bottom currently does not require any fire floor requirements, so their charges are the lowest because they do not include any fire protection sizing in that infrastructure. As we talked about, the committee felt that a more spread-out approach was appropriate for this utility, so we developed a 10-year phase-in for this utility. Now, one item to note is that these charges represented are in today's dollars, because we, if we do adjust by inflation, it has to be by an accredited index, and we're not foreseeing what the index would actually be. So one item to note is that whatever's listed here would also have to be adjusted by that index when that inflation occurs. And that's it. That's my portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Sergey. Director Moon, do you have additional information?
I do not. Just want to recap. Recommendation is to adopt the new rates that would take effect on the first of the year and to authorize the mayor to accept the study. Happy to answer any questions.
That is great. I'm going to go to the Chair of Mobility and Infrastructure Committee and give him his degree in rate study analysis, along with the other two committee members. The presentation was fantastic, but Chair Joe, would you like to summarize the committee's recommendation on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My dad is Dr. Joe. He's a psychologist, taught at Idaho State University for about 40 years. I would probably not be able to follow in his footsteps, but thank you for the honor. City staff and FCS consulting, I want to thank them both for taking the time to walk us civilians, I'll call it, through this minefield of water rates and sewer rates. As maybe you know, it's a process that we go through every five years to do a rate study, and that started in 2024. And that study involved the collection and scrutiny of a great deal of data, including each customer's class, use of the systems, asset replacement plan, assumptions, and maintenance and operations expenditures. The team, our committee and staff in FCS, evaluate how to provide for the continued performance of our utility systems while ensuring affordability for customers. During 2025, the cities, our council committee of the whole and the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee met and combined five times to discuss the policy options and rate design considerations. I want to thank staff and FCS for taking our questions, coming back with information so that we could make accurate decisions on each of the pieces that were involved here. And in September, our last meeting for the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, we reviewed and voiced support for the final recommendations that are being presented this evening. I think that Director Moon pointed out that they're predictable, they're smooth in the way that they are going to increase over time, and if those that are doing development can see the future in terms of what those charges might be with an inflation index on them, or just as they are in the table and chart, they can plan for their development and do their analysis before they're deciding to put projects into Issaquah or to not put projects in Disquah. So that concludes kind of the committee summary, and I'll look to my other committee members if they would like to add anything else to, add to their accolades as fellow doctors. Thank you.
Yeah, I have three questions on this. Really appreciate the presentation, since I didn't get a doctorate. I just, I'm looking for maybe bachelor's level questions, but in land use, one of the adjustments that we made this year was recognizing that some of this middle housing is very similar to single-family. And so I appreciate the idea of single-family and duplex here. In land use, we also included triplex and quadplex in that designation, kind of any of the requirements about street or sidewalk updates. And so I'm wondering if there was any consideration there, whether there was any reason just to combine a single-family and duplex, or if there are any other options there.
So we did have some discussion about that. We certainly had a lot of discussion with the Community Planning and Development Group as well, so that we could watch how the codes were coming together or diverging. And under the water code and our utility billing, those larger unit, more multiple unit residences were considered multifamily. And so as we looked at usage characteristics and distinct classes as they already existed, it was apparent to us that duplex and single-family was a good, good thing to combine. Triplex and quads, we don't necessarily have the same level of detailed information, because those weren't distinct classes to begin with.
Second question, general facilities charges. So I've heard concerns from residents about, you know, if they're doing residential addition, having to upgrade to like a two-inch water line rather than the one-inch, and how much more expensive that is. That decision about whether or not a two-inch versus a one-inch doesn't have to do with our utility rate study. There's other requirements, correct?
That is correct. It's, it's based on, on the proposed land use.
Okay. Just making sure, because looking at this, you know, there is a very big difference in the general facilities charge, but that's not something that we are necessarily adopting as a decision point here. And then third question, irrigation. I am interested why for both the parks and right-of-way and private irrigation, why the fixed and usage charges are so much less than other users such as commercial or residential? I would think if we are looking to reduce water usage, one of the ways that we could do that is to recognize that users of irrigation aren't as much highly needed as someone who is drinking water and such. So is there any justification or reason why that is so much lower?
Sorry about that. So the charges are set for each class in the class of service, and you have to see what portion of the water consumption is actually going into each tier. So majority of the irrigation is in the upper tiers, while residential is probably significantly less in the lower tiers, which is significantly less expensive. So on average, the irrigation rate So on average, the irrigation rate is a lot more expensive, and you'll see the upper tier is quite a bit pricey. Overall, we set the total target for the class based on the cost service analysis, and which is per unit is probably one of the most expensive classes of service that you have for the water utility.
Okay. I want to just go back to the slide that is showing that because I'm trying to understand the fixed rates, I believe, are much lower.
So the fixed charges typically recover the fire flow proportion and portion of the system, which includes oversizing of facility mains, oversizing of booster pump stations, all the fire hydrants assets, and the irrigation class of service does not benefit from fire protection whatsoever. So their fixed charges do not include any fire flow recovery in them.
That is a great explanation. That makes me feel a lot better about it, appreciate it. Good having an expert on hand who can answer bachelor-level questions.
I was going to say, we're going to give you your bachelor's. They got their doctorate, we're going to give you your bachelor's. Additional questions? Councilmember Hall.
Thanks. Yeah, I was actually just curious if we had had an opportunity to connect with the county at all as they increased their own rates and charges around sewer, particularly when we first talked about this. You know, we were wanting to be sensitive to ratepayers and wanting to kind of share our story with the county. So I'm just curious if we did that, or if we plan to.
Yes, we've had, we've been part of some discussions. We will be continuing to take part in many discussions. There are even some on a regional level that will involve elected officials as well. And I expect that's going to be a continuing conversation about how King County charges are escalating or projected to escalate over time. So we certainly are trying to keep that in mind. Our system, though, and it's half of the components, shall we say, is distinct, and we need to plan for the replacement of those things as well. So we'll continue to monitor that, but we are vocalizing that it becomes increasingly difficult to pay when year-over-year increases are in double digits.
Thank you. Madam Mayor? If I can just add, some of your neighbor city councils are very upset about the county's rate setting. And the efforts that Director Moon referred to is coming from those communities. I think Kirkland has been the leader in this, trying to get all of the parties together to say, how can the county stand alone? And how can the county continue to set rates that ratepayers don't have the ability to pay and to do it without really any consideration of that? And so Kirkland has been trying for several months to get a meeting together. I think there finally is a date set for that meeting, and we'll see what happens. But again, as your colleagues around the county are having very similar discussions, there are councils that are much more agitated about this than others. And so we'll see where that goes. I think that the issue of ability to pay is a serious one. And as we look at other fees for service that are controlled by other agencies coming up, we're going to have to, you know, come to grips with that balance of how much can people pay? And do these agencies that are a step or two removed from the payers, you know, what kind of guardrails are there? And I think that's the intent of the city of Kirkland in trying to get partners together is to talk about, you know, should there be more guardrails?
Well, and if I, my Madam Mayor and Council too, I mean, they should be upset, you know, and beyond just ability to pay, too, there's also, I mean, back when this all started, we were even talking about, well, reduce of scope to just most urgent needs in infrastructure, but then also talking about using debt and things like that. So if these aren't tools and if these aren't strategies that the county is a willing partner to kind of be at the table with us to keep ratepayers in mind, then those are conversations we need to have. It's very challenging.
If you're here January 1st. That's a great comment. We weren't actually in comments, we're still in questions, but I appreciate the context for the public to understand that you all are the ones they're going to call when their utility bills get unaffordable, and it doesn't matter if you say it's the county portion that went up by double digits and yours that went up by six. Doesn't really matter. So great context for everybody. Additional questions? Councilmember Jiang.
So I remember, you know, originally, there were a few different scenarios for how much debt versus, you know, cash to pay for some of these capital improvements. And then I think recently, we also, you know, had to do this Newport sewer relocation that was $3 million. So I'm curious how that affected kind of what we're seeing today, if at all.
So if you're referring to total debt borrowing, in the short term, just to coincide with the policy guidance from the first meeting in March 10th, the first five years don't include any borrowing for any of the utilities for the revenue requirement. We are forecasting some borrowing outside of the five-year, in the next five-year period because we are taking a look at the full consolidation. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I can definitely provide that information once I have access to it. But the first five years don't include any borrowing whatsoever.
Great, thank you. Additional questions from council? I'm not seeing. Chair Joe, would you like to make motion? If you have it in front of you.
Thank you. I'd like to authorize the mayor to accept the utility rate study report in substantially the same form as the attached draft report is approved by the, as the final by the Public Works Director, and adopt ordinance number?
3116.
3116, amending water general facility charges and bimonthly rates, and adopt ordinance number?
3117.
3117, amending stormwater general facility charges and bimonthly rates, and adopt ordinance number?
3118.
3118, amending sewer general facility charges and bimonthly rates.
Is there a second? Second? Couple of lights went on there. It has been moved and seconded. How about council discussion?
If I could go first.
Councilmember Joe?
Again, I really appreciate the work that was done by staff and our consultant on this. The fact that we're trying to smooth this out and to consolidate rates so that they're simple, more simple to understand, both by the public and those that are trying to build projects in the city, I think is a laudable and great achievement by staff and the consultant here. No one likes to see the rates go up, but we tried to do everything we could to make sure that those rates were reasonable at 6% most of the time, as was pointed out. And we can, we also have the ability to account for the projects that are going to be associated with these rate increases and why the system needs the rate increase to stay functional and stay up to date. And it also does charge reasonable amounts to people that are trying to come into our system and use our infrastructure as well. And so overall, I would support this agenda bill tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President, then Councilmember Ray.
Yeah, thank you. Just really great work on this. I think this was a good example of how we work together with staff and consultants and committees and everything. I particularly appreciated starting out with kind of a point-in-time conversation about where we are, what our experience was with some of our other recent increases, and how we wanted to design and kind of what our policy questions were for this. So I think that was a great starting point. Really appreciate the committee for digging deep into this and really, you know, asking those questions around who should be paying, what are the appropriate classes, how do we want to approach that billing? And then finally, looking at our projects and really tightening our belts on that. I think we did a wonderful job keeping to that idea and saying, yes, we know we need to do a lot of these things, but our ratepayers are hurting. We need to be as, you know, appropriate as possible with all of our needs. And I think it was quite amazing, really, that we were able to keep to this small level of increase considering all of the needs out there and our economic situation. So a lot of appreciation on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. Mayor Paul, you mentioned that you were, I can't recall if you were a land use geek or a land use nerd.
Geek or nerd, both were.
Geek. I got to tell you, the most fun I've had in my eight years on council is doing utility rate setting. And I now want to call myself a rate-setting geek, not with the PhD that Councilmember Joe has, but I am, I am looking forward to, you know, additional growth in this area. First, I want to thank Sergey for the incredible journey he took us on with staff. We could not do this without the help of, of someone like Sergey who really understands this, and he did such a really great job, and we saw it again on display tonight, of explaining all of the underlying factors in such a way that it's like, oh yeah, that makes perfect sense, and yeah, I get it. And then we, when we had desires and things that we wanted to capture, like simplifying the structure, like keeping the rates at a minimum level, like making them smooth. And like, one of the things that we didn't talk about today was we actually did some moving of rates around to make people's rates conform to what they consume because we were out of balance a little bit on that initially. So we accomplished that, and we did it in such a way that it was just kind of fun, and it was like a big jigsaw puzzle we got to put together. And I really just so appreciate all the effort from staff and from our consultants that helped us, from FCS that helped us get through that. So I think this is, this is a real win for the city of ISACWA.
Great. Additional comments? Maybe we'll just land on that happy note right there. If there's no further discussion, it has been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to accept the utility rate study report in substantially the same form as the attached draft report is approved as final by the Public Works Director, and adopt ordinance number 3116, amending water general facilities charges and bimonthly rates, and ordinance number 3117, amending stormwater general facility charges and bimonthly rates, and ordinance number 3118, amending sewer general facilities charges and bimonthly rates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries seven zero. And I, I got to just add on to what they have said. Director Moon and Sergey, wonderful job. It's a difficult concept for many of us to understand, and I think you really, really just hit it out of the park. Thank you so much for all of your work on this. So I have a little bit of sad news for Mariners fans. The game is over. The Mariners are not going to the World Series. Just in case everybody wasn't scrolling on their phone at this time. And with that bad news, we'll move into ID 1920, ID 1923. This is Autumn's item tonight, further discussion of the public safety and civics facilities. And the ask of council tonight is to provide some direction for the administration. Welcome, Autumn, our Administrative Services Director. Thanks for presenting this item tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. What better way to be cheered up than to talk about city facilities? Right? We'll reset the night here.
Good lead-in.
Great. So I'm here just to, just to collect some feedback and talk a bit about next steps around public safety and civic facilities. So first, just, we had our Public Safety and Civic Facilities Task Force provide its recommendations to you last month. Now you've had some time to let those soak in, and tonight, we'd like to hear some feedback from the council on their recommendations. Also, I'm really grateful that our Finance Director is here as well to review some potential funding tools, and then looking for your feedback on our information that's needed and some next steps. So direction needed is, what feedback does the council have on the task force's recommendation? What other information is needed? Administration is working on what a recommendation will be as far as next steps, and we'll come back to the council in Q1 of next year when we will have a new mayor. So as we're working with that administration on what our recommendations will be, we also want to hear from you on what other information or research we can bring back to you in that time. And then, does the city council agree with our proposed next steps? As always, I like to ground us in what the project goals are that have been affirmed by the council now for several years on ensuring safety, responsibly stewarding public dollars, providing community accessibility and convenience, supporting economic development, delivering enhanced community amenities, and embodying environmental stewardship. Just as a reminder, the task force recommendations, and this was a community task force that spent the best part of a year, really, working on these recommendations. It was one of the largest task forces in recent memory that we've had with really great engagement. They came to you last month, and their recommendations including addressing police space and operational needs as soon as possible, that really emerged early in their work as a top priority, relocating city hall operations and developing a plan to construct a new city hall on city-owned property, and then remodeling the 130 East Sunset Way building exclusively for police use. There were two options identified as preferred locations for building a new city hall. One of them is this property, City Hall South, which the majority of the task force was in favor of, but a very close second was our Pickering site next to Pickering Barn on the other side of town. The task force also recommended developing a comprehensive funding strategy of, again, tonight we'll start touching on a bit of what those funding tools could be, and then phasing the project if needed. Continuing robust public outreach and remaining flexible and open to new opportunities as they arise. And again, as a reminder here, the two locations and some draft renderings, just to give folks an idea of what a new city hall could look like as far as space, both at the Pickering location and the City Hall South site. The estimated timelines, the renovations for police at the 130 East Sunset Way building would be anywhere from two and a half to three and a half years. Building a new city hall is anywhere from three and a half to four years, and then relocating city hall would take about 13 months from its current location. Cost estimates, police renovations are anywhere from $15 to $26 million. We think would probably be in the middle of that range as we go through further design with police. A city hall built on this site would be anywhere from $44 to $53 million, and then city hall built at Pickering was $48 to $57 million. This slide I put together, just, there have been some questions from council members throughout this process around options for leasing, even in the short term, to move city hall out, city hall staff out of the 130 building to give it completely to police for exclusive use. So right now, currently, city hall administration space, so that is top floor of city hall, that is Eagle Room, which we've turned into a permit center, that is city hall south top floor of this building, and council chambers together is about 14,000 square feet. So that is the bare minimum that we need right now, and that's what we're using to operate. We've checked in with our real estate brokers. Current lease costs in ISACWA are about $35 to $49 per square foot a year, and potential lease costs then would, you know, factor in about half a million to probably more than that, closer to $700 or even more thousand dollars per year. And a lot of that will be based on the availability of property in ISACWA. We're not going to get exactly 14,000 square feet, but I just wanted to provide you just an estimate of kind of what that looks like as far as what leasing would be for current city hall uses. And now I'll invite up our Finance Director, Kristin Garcia, to provide an overview of some funding tools.
Thank you, Director Monahan, and good evening, Mayor and council. So I'm just going to walk through some of the tools that council has available to fund capital facilities. So one of the tools is voter-approved debt. So what that means is you would go out to the property taxpayers and ask them to approve an increase in tax levy. Estimated debt issuance is about $80 million. So we just kind of looked at the estimated ranges for the IPD renovations and what the cost of a new city hall would be, just to give an illustration of if you decided to do a bond levy, what, what would that potentially look like? So we assumed an $80 million debt issuance. A bond measure approval would require about a 60% vote yes to pass. Annual debt service about $6.4 million. That was based on an interest rate of 5%. We would probably get a little lower than that, but not knowing when or if we would issue bonds, we wanted to be a little bit conservative, so we assumed a 5% interest rate over a 20-year term. That came out with a debt service of $6.4 million. And then looking at the 2025 assessed valuation, that would be an increase of about 36 cents per thousand, and that would bring our total levy rate to about $1.07, and then estimated impact to the household at $4.37 per year. And that is based on the average median home value of the 1.2 million. So if someone had a home value more than 1.2 million, their dollar increase would be more than $4.37, but if their home value was less than 1.2 million, they would pay less. So again, this is some assumptions based on a point in time today. Those numbers would change based on, you know, we know our assessed valuation is going to change next year, and interest rates would depend upon when and if we to change next year, and interest rates would depend upon when and if we issued bonds.
Is it okay if we take a question?
Of course.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. And it's not necessarily about this, but I know there were rumors earlier this year around the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds and whether or not that would be going away. I've just, I actually don't know if anything ever came of that, so I thought I'd ask staff.
I don't believe that went away. I believe the last information that I heard, that that was tax-exempt bonds still existed, so that's still an option.
That's good. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Council President?
Yes, and in reading the packet, I believe it said that this kind of bond, you can pay the annual debt service out of the bond. Is that correct? And there's different types of bond issuances, but this one would be, the one we're talking about, would be where you can pay the debt service out of the bond longer than nine years, right?
Correct.
Right. So, when we talk about annual debt service, that would not be in addition to $80 million? It would be part of what we build in? Is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, we would go out to get $80 million?
Under this assumption, not knowing what the actual costs are, we were just kind of looking at the ranges of what Director Monahan had proposed. What would the potential cost of the renovations be? What would the potential cost of city hall be? We kind of landed on an $80 million estimate, just to provide an illustration on if the cost was $80 million, if that's what we were asking the taxpayers for a bond levy for, what would that debt service potentially look like?
Okay. But if we, well, maybe this is something we talk about down the road, but the annual debt service would then be in addition? We go out for $80 million plus whatever the debt service is on top of that?
The $6.4 million would be the debt service on the $80 million. So, that would be on top of any debt service we're currently paying on bond levy.
Okay.
Does that, because we do currently have some bonds that are currently paid by bond levy, so this would be in addition to that. Although, when I get to a couple of slides, we do have some bond levy that's rolling off, so that might help answer your question as well.
Okay. Council President? Oops, I'm sorry. Councilmember Zhang, Council President?
Yeah, I guess just my understanding of how it works is basically, we go out with the voter, this proposal, like to go out to the voters to approve a bond for $80 million, and then the debt payment that the city has to make is $6.4 million, and then that would be the amount of property tax per year. So, the $80 million is basically, we're borrowing $80 million and then paying back $6.4 million per year for 20 years. Is that correct?
Correct. And that would be paid in this scenario from the property tax levy. So, that wouldn't be out of our existing revenue. It would be paid through the property tax levy.
Great. And then, one more question. So, you mentioned the short-term space leasing options earlier. Is there a proposed funding source for that, or would that just come out of the general fund?
At this point, it would come out of the general fund. I think as we take a deeper dive, once we hear from council on one of, some of the options that they might want to see a little bit more in depth, we can explore other options, but currently, that would be paid out of the general fund.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Council President?
Yes, and I believe that might have been answered. Is this a, potentially a 20-year bond, and are there other options that we would look at?
This illustration was based on a 20-year term, but we can explore other options.
No additional questions at this time?
Okay, I'll go on to my next slide. So, this slide was just illustrating, kind of as a follow-up to the first slide. This is a comparison of our neighbors and what their total tax levy rate is. Right now, Issaquah has a total tax levy rate that's lower than our neighbors, based on this slide. If we did the $80 million issue as presented in the example on the previous slide, and our levy rate increased to $1.7, we would be higher than Redmond, Kirkland, and Bellevue, but we would still be lower than Semamish and Snoqualmie. And again, that's just an illustration. We can do a comparison as we take a deeper dive with actual numbers. Another tool that's available to council is council manic debt. So, what that means is you approve the debt through adoption of a bond ordinance, assuming the same scenario, if we issued $80 million in bonds, if the debt service on that was $6.4 million, under this scenario, there would be no dedicated revenue to pay the debt service. So, what that would mean is, we would need to take existing revenue that's currently funding services and redirect that to the debt service. As mentioned, we do have existing debt that will be expiring, so we do have some current voter-approved debt that will be expiring between 2025 and 2027. That should lower our bond levy rate. We haven't taken a look at how much of a reduction that would be, but that was not assumed in the scenario that I presented before, that if we issue the $80 million, the total levy rate would go up to $1.7. Knowing that some debt will be rolling off, there could be some offset to that. We just don't have the numbers for that tonight. And then, we have 2019 bonds, council manic debt that will be retiring in 2028, freeing up about $500,000 in annual debt service that's currently being paid by the general fund. Then, we also have some existing funds. We have some sale of properties, so we have about $9.6 million from sale of properties that we have available. We also have some government mitigation funds, so that's impact fees for police facilities, government facilities, bicycle and pedestrian. We have about $345,000 in the police mitigation fund available. We also have some mitigation fees from a developer agreement, about $3 million from the Lakeside developer agreement. And then, our public safety sales tax will be coming online next year. We could carve out a portion of that. That total revenue source is about 2.2 million is what we're estimating. We could, that is an ongoing, the tax does not expire, so we could carve out a portion of that to help either fund debt service or do a one-time capital contribution. And then, the same with construction sales tax. That is something that we don't currently carve out. That is just part of our regular sales tax that goes to fund ongoing expenses, but because it is directly related to construction, we could consider that one-time revenue, and we could carve out a portion of that to use for either ongoing or one-time capital contributions. The $1 million represents, we looked at a historical view about how much that we receive annually just from construction sales tax, and $1 million is about half of what we receive each year.
Kristin, we're going to take a question from Council President?
Yes.
Thank you. Trying to understand some of this, with the one-time or lump sum monies that we have there, when you're looking at a potential $80 million, and I know that's still just a pie-in-the-sky number and all of that, are these dollar amounts that could potentially lower that as one option?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is another option using things like the $9.6 million to pay debt service over a number of years, and thus utilize that as another option, so that maybe we did a certain portion with council manic bonds, where we had our payments worked out with these and a certain amount with voter bonds?
Yes. I think both of those are options we could explore.
Okay. So, it's not that we have to have annual revenue necessarily coming in, like the public safety sales tax of the $750,000 a year to pay debt service. We could dedicate a specific amount of money that we have in the general fund and utilize that for planned payments.
We could.
Okay. Great.
Great. Keep going, Kristin. Oh, Councilmember Hall?
Well, now, I'm thinking maybe I should wait. Can you, so, that's an interesting point, and it brings up kind of almost a trade-off in my brain, too, around keeping, what was it, $80 million, $40 million? $80. Keeping it at $80, potentially using one-time monies to pay annual debt service versus lowering the original amount so we can get to paying principal quicker than paying interest? Is that something we should be thinking about in terms of the term? Because the shorter the term of the bond, the quicker we get to paying principal from interest. Is that right?
Correct.
So, if we're able to lower it from $80 quicker, we pay less interest in the long term. Is that right? Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly. Thanks.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
So, we're here tonight to collect your initial feedback for the task force and from this first discussion around some funding tools. We'll be back to you in the first quarter of 2026 with administration's recommendation on next steps around this project, also with an engagement plan for the coming year. And we could then start some further design work for PD as a next step. So, that's the proposed timeline. So, again, direction needed is, what feedback does the council have on the task force's recommendations? What other information do you need that we can do some research on the next several months? And do you agree with our proposed next steps?
Thank you, Autumn and Kristin. So, before we go to answering those three questions, do you have any other questions you'd like to ask first? Councilmember Ray?
Really simple one. Why do you think it's more expensive to build the location at Pickering than at the current City Hall South location, particularly since we wouldn't have to do demo there?
Most of it, from what I understand, is involving, it's in a floodplain, so we'd have to build up.
Great. Councilmember Mertz?
So, one of the things that may not be obvious in the discussion of potential locations was the fact that basically, a decision was made early on to not look at eminent domain opportunities. And can you speak to that decision and what that would do to the solution space?
Sure. You know, the task force had really robust discussions around locations, and also, you know, we're looking a lot at how expensive this would be to build a new city hall. And so, very quickly, a value came out from many of the members that we should be looking at city-owned property to be building the city hall. And so, that was quickly refined, you know, down to our search of what properties do we have at the city that could be viable options for a city hall, frankly, just to save us money on this project.
And Councilmember Mertz, I'm assuming you're asking that, because many in our gallery of viewers tonight won't understand that we have to pay when we do eminent domain, and the property is expensive.
Right. Thank you.
Great. Additional questions before we start with Councilmember Zhang on answering the three questions here? Okay, no additional questions. So, I think what would be super helpful is if we could just get everybody's feedback, and I'm picking on Councilmember Zhang, because she's the doobie, but if anybody wants to jump in and answer the three questions first and give her a break, you can do it. Oh, she put up her microphone. There we go.
Okay. So, I think in terms of like the task force recommendation, we talked about that last time, I think, you know, we have to upgrade the police station, and to do that, we have to build a new city hall. So, it's kind of like, we got to do it. I think my preference in terms of funding is to maximize the use of funds that we already have. And I did some quick maths, and, you know, if we use all of our existing, you know, one-time funds to, as capital contributions, and then use the rest of it, you know, the ongoing funds to help pay for debt service, I think we could reduce the amount that we need to go out to voters to by half, which would be great. It would be like $40 million instead of $80 million. And then, I think, based on my maths, which, again, needs to be verified, but I think that would allow us to keep our overall levy rate lower than all other cities, including Redmond. So, that would be good. But again, you know, just like directionally, I think we want to make sure that we're maximizing the use of our tax money, of taxpayer dollars, and so I think, you know, by showing that, okay, you know, we're using the public safety sales tax. I think I'm also generally a big fan of using construction sales tax dollars for capital projects. I think you can, you know, where you've seen neighboring communities do that, they've actually been very successful, because some construction is very lumpy, and so you don't want to have to, you know, balance your budget off of something that's less predictable. And, yeah, in general, I think, you know, in terms of the proposed next steps, that's good. One other thing I would note is that I think we should consider, I mean, you know, in our plans, we can look at how much it might cost to acquire a different property, especially adjacent to existing city-owned properties, because, I mean, if you just look at, you know, the cost of Pickering is like $6 million more than this site. And so, if there's the potential to acquire other land that costs less than $6 million, it would still be less costly. And so, that's definitely something we should explore. And obviously, you know, I'm not saying, oh, we should go buy any land, but it has to be a cost-benefit analysis, and we need to explore all those options.
Thank you, Councilmember Zhang. Councilmember Joe?
I wanted to stay in order this evening, so that I would go next, and then, sure, we'll go right down the line. I appreciate the work that's been done by the task force. I don't necessarily have any feedback on their recommendations. I think they did a great job scoping out what is available in town, really looking at the different properties and what might work for us along the way. In terms of what other information is needed, I think that with Director Garcia here now in our finance department, it sounds like, if I'm kind of reading between the lines a little bit from the presentation, that we're going to keep our powder dry for now in the sense of keeping the money that we have from the sale of the building, the other pieces, such that we can take advantage of something should it come to fruition. And we did that with the acquisition of the Forest Hillside land that we recently acquired and the land along the stream. We were able to acquire land that was probably more expensive or outside of our league a little bit, because we had some saved, and we were able to team up with other entities that could help us make that gap so that we could get that land. I would hope that we'd follow that type of strategy for acquisition of land or construction of the city hall. We keep the money that was just in the presentation there, and then make sure that we are ready to act should something come up and come open that we were not expecting at all. So, I think you do a great job of giving us the information when those properties open up through our executive sessions. I would just ask that you stay on your toes, keep your ear to the ground, and see what might open up for us, and be creative about how we might be able to acquire that. In terms of the next steps, I agree that an outreach program should be needed, would be helpful so that we can get out to the public and start telling them why a potential ask will be made for them to approve some funding, or if the council decides to do a councilmatic route, why we're doing that and why it's the best and most efficient way to use their tax dollars for the future facilities for the city. So, appreciate all the hard work, and those are my comments tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Hall?
Thanks. Yeah, round one, kind of initial thoughts, and then I might want to riff off what other people are thinking, too. Definitely, I mean, I was on the task force, you kind of know where my head sits a little bit on this, but definitely a major alignment of the task force was address IPD ASAP. And there was also some, you know, deliberate task force discussion and encouragement for, just to make sure the council does its due diligence and kind of reads the room with the community, is this really the right time to be going out to the voters? So, especially when it's been kind of challenging in this area to run bond measures lately. So, I'm definitely not opposed to considering it, because I agree we shouldn't be kind of indefinitely leasing general government space. That's kind of a bad best practice. But I am interested in seeing an option that's focused on IPD remodel with council manic debt, and what it would take to just pay off debt service on council manic bonds over X number of years, just to do an IPD remodel as kind of a suite of options that we're looking at. And so, that would be one thing I'm looking at or looking for. And then, yeah, I guess then part of that would be teasing out, okay, what of our one-time slash ongoing revenues is paying debt service on council manic bonds, and what of that is paying our lease payments every year? And I don't have any more feedback, other than to say that's difficult, and I look forward to seeing what you think about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thanks. I think the task force recommendations are fine. I was gratified to see that there was at least an alternative location that was proffered. I think that that's good. But I think the biggest thing I want to share is the information needed. We need a, and the questioning here kind of teases this out, we need a lot more information on what the financing options look like. I mean, it's not just this or nothing. So, I mean, how much of, you know, give us the continuum of different things, and up to and including, what if we don't have the, you know, the public safety sales tax revenue? What does that mean? What if we do have it? What does that mean? So, do the financial model like times 10. And then, I think maybe first-quarter engagement plan might be a little premature, but, you know, it's never too early to start reaching out to the public. So, that's really all I have to share.
Thank you. Councilmember- Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first off, I think that the task force was very well constituted, and the consultants that were engaged did a good job. I agree with the statement earlier that one of the critical pieces of information to come out of this was that addressing IPD is the highest priority. And so that was, that was the sort of first half aha moment with the group. I think that bonds have gotten a bad name because I think that the city made a bond attempt a while back. I think that in retrospect, it did not have this kind of community engagement. So it did not carry the impetus from the community. And then recent school bond efforts, I'm not to say that that should be the gold standard for how, how we look at bonds either. I think of bonds a lot like juries, which may seem like a weird analogy. But I think the public is a lot smarter and a lot more willing to difficult and challenging things than, than we give them credit for, much like juries are able to tease out the right answer in complex cases before them. And so I think that if we go to the public with a, with a really smart bond, if we take what the community has told us in this task force and then shape something and go to the public, I think it's, it's very, very likely to get a strong response. We know how much public safety is important to the public. So, you know, I'm excited about that process. I think we should get going on it. I think location, the reason that I asked about eminent domain is I don't think the City Hall South location is viable without some eminent domain work. It's just too small. The pictures that you showed, it's, it's, I mean, when we were in, when we were in the task force, we're like, is, is there a sidewalk there? Because you couldn't even tell that there was a sidewalk because it was so jammed up against the street. And so I just, I've never believed that this was a viable location by itself. And so, you know, if you ask me, this building versus Pickering, I'm all about Pickering. I think that it has some wonderful opportunities in the sense that there's public recreation amenities to, to city employees available at Pickering that we could continue to build on because we'd have our staff over there. You got to raise it up four feet because it's in a floodplain, but, you know, that can be done. I think, I think this city has an emotional, you know, Old Town is the whoopee, right? It's the frayed teddy bear that we all, that we all clutch to. It's wonderful to have it, and it's a differentiator. But I think we should consider having a city hall that's outside of Old Town. The sky would not fall, you know, and it would be part of our commitment to the valley floor more broadly rather than just looking at Old Town. So I'm, I would be excited about that. The committee did pick City Hall South a little bit over Pickering, but it was really, both locations were seen as very viable by the task force. It's just that it was like, well, if you're going to pick one over the other, okay, City Hall South. But they were, they were both very viable. So I am excited about this process moving forward. I think we're in a better place than we were six months ago because of the work of the task force. So thank you, Autumn, for the, for the work that your team did on it. And let's, let's move forward. It will be a complicated financial process to come up with $80 million. But once again, I just want to say, I trust the voters of Issaquah. That if we explain, if we can bottle what the task force said and basically use the words of our community to explain to the public what we're trying to do, we will be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Council President.
Thank you. A lot of, I have a lot of thoughts here, and a lot of them have already been mentioned. So I'll just try to condense my thoughts. I think somebody already mentioned communications. I got buttonholed not, probably a week ago. I'm not quite sure what that word means, but you get the idea. Somebody was pointing at me like this, saying, why are you moving City Hall over to Pickering? And it was like, whoa. So communications, I think we want to get ahead of the community perceptions because there's folks out there who already think we've made this decision. And so I tried to explain that we are really in the research phase of this project. So, but you know how word travels on the street. So, so I agree with Councilmember Mertz that we need full transparency. We need to be explaining to people where we are in the process, and we need to be aggressive about that and, and mark everything draft, 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 and, you know, in process, in process, in process. So the community doesn't get all upset about something that may not, in the end, happen anyway. So I also fully support the idea of exploring the Pickering barn site. And I understand that eventually that will become a community decision. But again, on the communications front, we need to explore that fully, gather data, be able to present a full picture of the pros and cons of each site. And I think it was Councilmember Joe that said you were supposed to stay on your toes and keep your ear to the ground, which is kind of a peculiar picture in my mind. But at any rate, there might be, there might be possibilities of adjacent land that would be also in the planning of this. So, yeah, I think we need to be like nimble enough to take advantage of, of possibilities as they arrive. One thing, when I was looking at the projected costs for City Hall and also the projective graph, project, the graphics that you are, I'd like to, I know that we are not at the point where we're going to make a design. But I think at the 30,000 level, is this going to be a small utilitarian city hall with limited services and limited hours? Or are we going to respond to the community comment we've heard over and over again that people want more meeting space, they want gathering spaces, all of that? So is it, on the other hand, going to be a large city hall with, that will be open to the public maybe 12 hours a day from early in the morning until late at night? And so I think at the 30,000 foot level, we kind of have to start talking about what is that? Because that will certainly impact what the cost is eventually. So I think that is some conversation that we need to start. Again, I agree again with Councilmember Mertz that we should trust our community and that if we put forward a bond that has been well-vetted, that we've spent a lot of time explaining, I think my preference would be for a voter-approved bond for the city hall. I, you know, again, we need more information, as Councilmember Ray said. But I would also be interested in possibly council manic bonds for the IPD renovation just because I think our community so strongly supports the idea of supporting our police department. So those are my thoughts right now, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. I continue to be impressed with the task force and their recommendation and all of the work that has been done there. So I think that's all solid finding. I appreciate that we are now taking this to the next level and talking about, you know, what are the possibilities? And I, I think we are having the appropriate conversations there, which is really great. I, you know, just as a baseline, I still have major concerns about leasing long-term or phasing the project and having the Issaquah Police Department and general government ideas separated. So I think keeping those together is really important because it's the truth of the project. I think we need to be really creative about keeping the amount we take to voters very low. And I think there's a lot of ways we can do that, whether that is taking the one-time funds that we have and using that to lower the amount, or taking some of those funds or some of the potential ongoing funds and using that for lowering the amount by having part of it be a council manic bond and part of it going out to the voters, which I think could potentially cut that amount that we're asking the voters in half. And I think those are really important considerations. Equally important, I think, is the scope of the project. And so I agree with Deputy Council President DeMichele that really getting an understanding of what do we think as a council is appropriate? Is this a small, limited government building? Or is this something that could provide community use for many of our nonprofits or Girl Scouts groups and all of those as just a way to create a community space? I think is really important. And so I think before we go too far to the public, I think we together need a clear vision of what we think is appropriate. And then that idea probably needs to be the first thing to go to the public so that we have a sense of what size, what scope, what needs are there. And then we can start to figure out the financing of that project. And then what other information is needed? Agree that we need a lot more financial information. I love seeing some of this as the start. But I would like to see various estimates that would include the bond amount, the debt service, the interest, the increase to levy rates, and the impact to households for various scenarios. Looking at the multiple different locations, taking that idea of a partial council manic and voter-approved bond, figuring out, you know, what are our options for taking that one-time revenue and lowering the amount versus utilizing that for debt service? And so those things, and then Councilmember Jiang mentioned earlier the idea of construction sales tax for capital projects. I must admit, I was a little bit concerned when that was initially brought up because I'm like, we've been balancing our budget based on this. But I do think it is a good point, that that has maybe created too many bumps in our budget scenario. And so I think we should look at that for use on capital projects and potentially a large portion on this. But I think before we can effectively do that, we need to have that budget conversation around, okay, if we're going to take $1 million out, what are we going to cut? Because I don't want to unintentionally make a decision here that says, okay, we are reliant on that $1 million for this project, but that's going to have unintended consequences on cutting services. And so I think we first need to get our budget scenarios in a row for that or come up with options. But I do think that is probably a good approach looking forward. I just don't want to start with, yes, this is the right approach without also recognizing what the impacts are for our services. So first round complete.
Going to go back for round two. Would any council member like to add some comments? Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you. For folks who were not part of the task force, I want to mention that, you know, I talked about that our consultants did a very good job. One of the things they did was they did a very detailed analysis of the square footage use. And they talked to the task force about what are you looking for in terms of community space? And the cost estimates that have been presented here this evening specifically carry that feedback from the task force. Now, that's not, that's not the be all and end all decision of what our city hall should look like, but it is a great starting point, right? That it isn't what, you know, Zach and I think a city hall should look like. It was what the task force felt, and it was, it was a wonderful vision of getting back to the kind of community space that our city hall was pre-COVID and meant a lot to the community. Thank you.
Thanks. Additional second rounds. Councilmember Hall?
Well, and, yeah, in addition to that too, and I can't find it in the report, Autumn, but I think we, we had data from the community in terms of like, what would you come to City Hall to use in particular, including passports, which we don't do anymore. So that was interesting. And we had kind of robust discussion around that too, in terms of priority setting. So kind of even getting to what Council President was saying and Deputy Council President around what is it that we want in a city hall facility? I thought the task force did a good job kind of getting into the weeds on that. And I kind of agree with the vision that they've set there, but I just can't find it. So maybe you can help us find it in the report, because I know we had those conversations.
More second round comments? Autumn, did you want to say something or?
Sure, we, we did also do a community survey. The task force developed some questions around how you would best use community space. After we brought that information back to the task force and we started estimating the square footage, you'll see it's actually a larger city hall than what was first proposed when we started this project a couple of years ago. And so we did take that feedback from the task force, and we did hear from the community that they do want spaces. And what you're seeing is an estimate that does include robust community space as part of a city hall. So I can, I can reshare the, the data from that, that survey.
Thank you. Still on second round comments? Councilmember Jiang?
Yeah, I think, you know, as someone who is on the board of a nonprofit that doesn't have her own dedicated space and struggles to find space in the city, I'm very much in support of, you know, making sure that our city hall has those types of spaces. And I think in terms of communication, maybe some of those nonprofits could also, you know, help us make the case that these community spaces are super important to the community. So I think, I mean, just like, one of the things with the city hall is that, you know, the average voter doesn't really care about where the office is for general government employees. And so I think for us to be able to make the case to the community that this is important, we do have to say, you know, oh, here's the benefits, you know, we have these community spaces. We're going to be able to host these community events and, you know, and have that be something that is actually something that we as a community are actually investing in beyond just nice offices for staff, which is important too, but maybe less appealing to voters.
That's great. We do need workspaces. We can have some flexible workspaces, but the community is desperately wanting access, not just to whatever the new city hall campus may be, but to getting onto school properties and maximizing the use of the investments that they've made in school facilities to make sure that the public has much more access than they currently have right now. That's a very good point. Still on second round, Deputy Council President?
Okay, I was sitting here struggling over whether to ask this question or not, but I'll, I'll just be brave. So what are we thinking of in terms of building heights? Because when I looked at the graphic, it's like, is that a two-story building, a one-story? One story with a one-half, or is it a three-story? And the reason I'm asking is I think that the community will be very interested, especially if it looks like we're going to side it here, whether it's a two- or three-story building. So any discussion about that during the task force? And when we put out graphics, maybe start to address that in a way that, you know, when people look at it, they can say, well, this is the, this is kind of the way that that building is actually going to look, so.
Yes, so for City Hall South, the estimate is, what you see here is for three stories. Same with Pickering. Pickering has a much higher height restriction than the City Hall South site does. So we just did apples to apples, just again, this is like very initial, but we can definitely dive into that a bit more as far as what other options would look like. Yeah. It would come with further design.
Thank you, Autumn. Additional comments in the second round? Well, great. Councilmember Hall, why not?
The reason I'm hesitating is I'm like only half remembering what I wanted to say. Well, okay, there's one thing I do remember I want to say. Hopefully, the first part I will remember. So the, the main reason why I brought up wanting to explore what, just using council manic debt for IPD would look like is I think with IPD, time is not our friend, things need to happen ASAP. And even the timelines are already way out there. And we had, you know, people in the room talking to us about the urgency. It was funny, the first day, or even before the first day of the task force, you had taken out most of the task force for a tour. And I think on that tour, day zero, task force hadn't even been convened. They're like, what can we do right now? Can't do anything right now. It's, they're still looking out, so. With City Hall, I don't necessarily see that same level of urgency because I think that there are some lease opportunities that, and I'm trying, I'm just trying to be careful in not being specific here. I think that there are some lease to own or lease to condominiumize opportunities that exist, including, yeah, anyways. So I, I, that, I mean, that would still require capital anyway. So I think it is important to not completely divorce the two, as you're saying. But I just want to make sure we're all thinking about creative opportunities, like you said, Council President. I'm not remembering the first thing that I wanted to say, which is- which is really unfortunate. So I'll just leave that for now and send you an email if I think of it.
And actually copy the rest of the council when you do that.
Yeah, and I'll copy the rest of the council.
Councilmember Jiang?
One other thing that I just remembered that I should have mentioned earlier was I think one thing we should include in the potential like council manic debt portion is I saw there's some bonds that are expiring in like 2028. So I would love to see if we could use some of that revenue to pay for additional bonds on the city hall.
Thanks. If it's okay, I'm going to go to councilwoman Mertz because I don't think he's commented as much as councilmember Hall so far.
On the subject of council manic bond authority, one thing that I think would be helpful in a future conversation, much the same way that at budget time, we have talked about historical trends in spending. And I always like to look at per capita real dollars. If we could get some sort of a sense of the history of council manic bond use by this body. And if you tell me that on average, in today's dollars, we've historically carried $100 per resident or $500 per resident or whatever it is, and we're only carrying something less than that. To give us some context of, you know, what we've done historically that has worked for us. I know that our council manic load was much, much higher when I joined council in 2009. So, so I think that would help that conversation to understand historically what we've done. It would also help our conversation with the public, right? If, if we were going to do some of this through council manic and maybe some of this through a, through a citizen approved bond, you know, we could have that conversation about what's a reasonable thing for, for us to use that council manic and what isn't. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I just remembered, and it's just a quick ask for the next touch. If, if we could get some guidance on how we're allowed to talk about bond measure, I know, bond measures. I know at a certain point, it's very specific in terms of not necessarily at, like just stating the facts, not advocating for or against and stuff like that. So when does that kind of click in? And what are restrictions is what I'd like to know.
A great point. I am not seeing any more third round, potentially fourth round comments, especially from council, councilmember Hall. So there is no decision this evening. I'm just going to check with Autumn and Kristen. Do you need any clarification on anything you heard? Are you good for tonight?
No, thank you so much for the feedback.
Thanks. So no decision this evening. Thank you for the feedback. More to come. We're going to move on to the committee and regional reports. And we'll start with councilmember Jiang.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have one report from the Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting, which was, I believe, two Fridays ago, October 10th. So Sound Transit presented their 2026 service plan. And there's a couple of major notable changes for Issaquah. So the 554 bus will be consolidated with the 556. So riders going from Issaquah to Seattle will have to transfer to the light rail at South Bellevue. And I believe this change will be made when the light rail over the bridge opens. There's actually been, there's a survey from Sound Transit out, which was sent out in the Issaquah City newsletter. And I've actually seen people like posting it in, you know, on Reddit, in Facebook groups, in WeChat groups. So it's definitely, you know, people are becoming aware of this. And there's also when the light rail over I-90 opens, there's going to be changes to metro buses as well, which was not discussed in this meeting because that was more focused on the changes to Sound Transit. But one of the notable changes is that the 269 bus, which currently runs from Marymore Light Rail Station to Issaquah Transit Center, is actually going to run from, it's going to go from Marymore Light Rail Station to Issaquah Highlands Transit Center and then go straight to Mercer Island, which is interesting. And in my opinion, unfair to people who live closer to Issaquah Transit Center like myself. That's neither here nor there. The other thing that was presented in that meeting was that PSRC staff presented updates on federal and state policy, including updates on the federal government shutdown, which is still ongoing. On the state revenue forecast, basically the state revenues are forecasted to be much lower than they had originally thought. And then on the transportation revenue forecast, the forecast of transportation revenues are down slightly, mostly due to gas sales being down and EV sales being up. So, you know, that's kind of just like structurally as we move away from gas vehicles towards EVs. It's kind of how do we, you know, have money to do all these transportation projects? So, yeah, so that's it for the Eastside Transportation Partnership. And then for K4C, which is the King County Cities Climate Collaborative, there's a meeting this Friday from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at the King County Executive Climate, the King County Executive Office in Seattle. So I'll be going there and we'll report back in the next council meeting.
Thank you, councilmember Jiang.
Thank you. The next meeting for the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee will be November 24th, which is the Monday of Thanksgiving week. Next LTAC meeting will be November 17th. And Cascade Board meeting will be the 22nd of October. And the Public Affairs Committee meeting will be before the Cascade Board meeting to shoot the whole afternoon away for all of us. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
No report this evening.
Thank you, councilmember Ray.
No report.
Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, before I get to my report, I'm just struck by councilmember Jiang talking about the 554. I mean, there's a Seahawks game tonight. And my spouse is at the game. And she took the 554. And, and that 554 is hopefully going to pick her up at 10:53 PM this evening after the game is over and take her straight back to Issaquah. And it's, it's not, at 10:54 PM, you do not want, or 10:53 PM, you do not want to be heading off to intermediate stopping points. So anyhow, the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on October 8th. The major topics were the Indigent Defense Case Load Standards Letter to the Legislature. Some, what I would call minor changes were made. Although there was, there was an element to sort of stick it to the State Bar Association, which was a little bit hilarious. But other, but nothing that really changed the fundamental tone, which is that it's all very expensive and difficult for cities to comply and that civilized states do this stuff at the state level. And then there was a conversation with Fore Culture Doors. They presented, and then we had a conversation. And there was a lot of discussion about where the funds go versus where the funds come from. And it was interesting because the statement was made that, you know, the majority of the hotels occur in Seattle. And that's actually not, not the case. The majority of hotel beds in King County are outside the city of Seattle. 17,000 are in Seattle and 42,000 are in the county total. So this question, you know, one of the advantages to PIC is that we can help sort of provide early and real time feedback to organizations as they go to make their plans. And, you know, they're just a few years away from putting forward another bond for Fore Culture. And so it's just going to be really important to talk about where, which parts of the community get these, get these funds. And so PIC did its job by sensitizing to the issue. So it was, it was helpful. This concludes my report. Oh, and there's no services safety in parks this month. We're going to hold off until November for, for some staff work. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Mertz. And before deputy council president starts, I just want to add in that I do have staff monitoring what Issaquah pays in versus what's invested in Issaquah. And we are actually receiving more than I thought we would. And so while that's great for Issaquah, it doesn't mean it's equitable to distribution everywhere. So I was surprised to learn that we were actually doing fairly well under Fore Culture. Deputy Council President?
Thank you. On Wednesday, I, last Wednesday, I attended the Regional Transit Committee, actually chaired the committee last Wednesday. It was a very brief meeting. We looked at the Metro Strategic Plan Dashboard. The Sound Cities Association Caucus totally agreed that it is much, much improved. I'll send you the slides and the link to the dashboard because it really has a lot of good information. But the meeting itself was an hour or less, so very quick. And then last Thursday, I attended Board of Health. And we did unanimously adopt a resolution stating our support for access to healthcare for immigrants regardless of their status or country of origin. We are, the Board of Health will be distributing that resolution to every city in King County, to the governor's office, and to all of our congressional and state elected officials, just stating our support for open access for all of our community. Then, interestingly, earlier this morning, I sat in on with the Director of Seattle King County Health, Dr. Khan. And it was chock full of information. So if you'll just indulge me for a second, I'll find my notes. Usually these are half an hour briefings where nobody says very much. And this one went on for an hour and 15 minutes. And there were a lot of conversational points here. So first of all, Dr. Khan said that the CDC, as we know it, no longer exists based on the layoffs now that I think another thousand were, positions were eliminated now that the government is shut down. So he did bring to our attention that the West Coast Health Alliance, which is California, Oregon, California, and Hawaii, is up and running. And they are weighing in on vaccination issues. And he expects that they'll be tackling more issues so that they can provide the guidance that the CDC was providing. He also said that the governor is standing up a governor's health alliance, which will be probably, he said, probably in operation in six months. And again, the, the point will be to provide verifiable scientifically based information to the public so that we have a place to go to for information. There is a marked increase in COVID cases going on right now. And public health is expecting this to last through December. And so everybody get your vaccinations. And vaccinations are available in Washington State. This is not true in every state, but they are available in Washington State. Unfortunately, they are not universally free anymore. But people who have children that need to be vaccinated should go on to the Seattle King County Public Health website and look for options for free vaccinations for children under the age of 12. Another thing that he brought up is in preparation for the World Cup, there has been, he called it a plague of unlicensed food vending going on. And this is happening all across the country. And last year, King County Public Health got over 300 complaints about unlicensed vendors. And when the World Cup comes, they are expecting that to just explode. He explained that there, they have a hotline where you can report. And he said they are not punitive. Their whole approach, if somebody reports an unlicensed food vendor, is to go out to them, see if they can help them get licensed, get them training, go through the process of being licensed. And they even have funds to help those that can afford licenses to get licenses. He said it's not a punitive process. It is, their, their main concern is public health. And so if we see somebody that doesn't have the license plastered very prominently, please report it. And then lastly, you know, the state of Florida has decided not to vaccinate or not to require vaccinations in the public schools. And he said, even though that's a long way away from us, people travel. And he said, so they are preparing for anticipated sporadic outbreaks of measles, mumps, rubella, whooping cough, polio, and other diseases. And because in our country, you cannot isolate disease to a specific location. It travels. So I thought we had a really, really interesting discussion. There's a lot going on in public health. And it was really, I was really pleased to be able to sit in on it. It was just for Sound City Association members. So it was really good.
Excellent. Council President?
No report this evening.
I'm going to go into the mayor's report and state that there will not be an executive session this evening. But now I'm just going to go off script for a minute. As a council, I just want to say I am so appreciative of your regional footprint. You have one of the biggest of any city in King County. And that was not always the case. Besides councilmember Mertz being on PIC, we had a relatively small footprint a dozen years ago. And I don't know that the community understands how much extra work you have taken on. And in particular, deputy council president and the Board of Health, I don't think we've ever had anybody on the Board of Health before. So just my gratitude on behalf of the community for how thin you got yourself out throughout the region. Very much appreciated. So your voice matters. Vote now. I want to encourage everyone in our community to go out and vote. This upcoming election is the opportunity to shape the place you call home. And when you cast your vote, you help decide who leads, what priorities are set, and how your community moves forward. Every vote matters, so make sure to get your ballot in by the deadline. And we do have a drop box at the police, police station's city hall. Get to know the two candidates who are running for Issaquah Mayor on Wednesday, October 22nd, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at Blakely Hall. There will be a meet and greet with candidates starting at 6:30 PM, followed by the forum at 7:00 PM. And the city of Issaquah will be recording the forum to post on our YouTube channel for those who are unable to attend. And three upcoming events. Join the Issaquah Alps Trails Club at the next public forum on Wednesday, October 22nd, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. This in-person event will feature keynote speaker Dave Uffegrove, Commissioner of Public Lands, and a panelist of local experts to discuss stewarding healthy forests in the Issaquah Alps and beyond. This event is free and open to the public. Registration is required. So for more information, visit the Issaquah Alps Trail Club website. And introduction to emergency preparedness. An emergency can happen at any time, and are you prepared for the next one? Learn basic emergency preparedness principles from the Issaquah Community Emergency Response Team on Saturday, October 25th, from 4:00 PM to 5:30 PM at the Issaquah Library. Registration is required and check the library's website for more information. And Booit the Barn is back. It returns this Friday with a weekend full of frightful fun, including carnival games, spooky vendors, fire pits, and smores. Skate if you dare. Come to the Haunt the Rink for a spooky roller skating experience to chilling tunes and haunted vibes. Dare to enter the woods, be brave and wander the psychopath filled with shadows and surprises lurking in the dark. Space is limited, so pre-registration is highly recommended. Don't miss this new magical fall tradition. Good of the order. Any council members with items for good of the order? Council President?
Thank you. No, Pumpkins, Pumpkins is deputy council president. So definitely. I was just going to riff on what the mayor said about our regional footprint. And just note that the SCA applications, Sound Cities Association applications for this next year are coming up. And so expect deputy council president and myself to reach out as we're trying to determine, since we're losing some members, what opportunities we have to serve on SCA boards as well as in some of our other local opportunities. So just, we will be reaching out. Thanks.
Deputy Council President, anything on Pumpkins?
I have one. And I also have the platform. So I will be reaching out to see when we're going to, when we're going to decorate it. I have in my mind a possible theme, but I will share that privately.
It is a contest.
It is a contest. So I will share that. It'll be, I think it's okay to do that. I think it's okay to share Pumpkin information privately. So, yeah.
Pumpkin information is fine. Just don't vote on it.
Right. So, yeah, that's my full Pumpkin report.
Great. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. If this announcement's already been made, I apologize. But the Issaquah Arts Organization got an inaugural Community Contribution Award from the State of Washington Tourism for their recent film festival. And it's a great honor that they got. It was a fantastic film festival during the summer. And look forward to the next one that will be coming, hopefully in 2026. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Any other good of the order? Going to announce a few upcoming meetings. There's a special city council meeting on Monday, October 27th, at 6:30 PM. And the anticipated agenda items include the 2025-26 Mid-Biennium Budget Adjustment. And due to the election being held the first week of November, the next regular city council meeting will be Monday, November 10th. The anticipated agenda items include the 2026 School Impact Fees, Fire Code Permit Fee Increase, and Fee Pass Through, Central Issaquah Multimodal I-90 Crossing Study Update, BNO Tax Online Payment Processor Agreement, WashDOT's Transfer of Development Rights Development Agreement Extension for Bellevue College. And their exception this evening, I'm going to adjourn us at 9:31.